Good evening. The time is now seven o'clock and I would like to call the Beloit City Council meeting to order at this time. Command Roja.
All councilors are present except for Council Preschel.
Item number two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will we all stand, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is special orders of the day and announcements. And before we go to the proclamations, I have a presentation that I would like to make at this time. And I'll be heading to the podium, so give me a couple minutes. At this time, I would ask Counselor DeForest if she would come forward. And as she's coming forward, for those of you who may not know in the listening public and in the forum, it's been in the paper, on the radio, that Counselor DeForest is leaving us, heading to California. She's moving there for another journey in her life. We want to thank her for her time on the Beloit City Council. One thing that we can say about Counselor DeForest, that is she has a cause. She was going to fight the battle. Even if she had to stand alone, she was going to fight the battle. And that says a lot. That helps cities move forward. She was not afraid to let her opinion be known, even if she was on the island by herself. And I value that because you don't want a council made up of people who've just rubber-stamped, and I'm stealing Sheila's words, that they've said that's rubber-stamp and just go along with the status quo. We have to challenge the leaders and we have to challenge the community. Those of you who know Sheila, if there's something going on, she's there. The interesting thing about it is she's often said she's not a product of Beloit, but she moved here and made Beloit her home. So there's a lot of people that's on Facebook that were congratulating her for leaving, but I personally want to thank her for instilling in me, as her leader, as a president, the respect that I have for her. Even though we joke around, I respect people who speaks their minds, speak their opinion. Often times, we may not agree, but it's okay because you can agree without being disagreeable. She's been here for a long time, through several councils, and I think if other previous councils would come forward and you say, "Give me one word or two words about Sheila," they would say determined and outspoken. And I think that speaks value. My dear running to her and I said, "I feel sorry for California." I'm giving her two days for when she gets there. I guarantee you, you'll see on the news that she will find a cause in California before she moves into where her house, and she'll be fighting that cause because she truly cares about people. And when you care about people and the rights of people, no matter where you go, you make that your cause. So normally what we do is present them with a plaque of everything that they served on. So the plaque says, "City of Beloit, Wisconsin, presented to Sheila DeForest by a grateful community in appreciation for your service on the Beloit City Council, April 20, 2008 to August 2017." And she served as the council vice president. And also listed on here is all of her committees that she served on during her tenure here as a councilperson. So first of all, I want to give her that.
Thank you.
Then second of all, what we want to do, and it's just ironic that we're presenting her with a pin from the city of Beloit, which we have an individual here who was instrumental in putting this pin together. So I want to give her the pin. And then we wanted to say, now Sheila's leaving, we want to do a little bit more than just give her her plaque and give her a pin because Sheila is an advocate of the city of Beloit. So since she's leaving and she's going to tell people she's from Beloit, Wisconsin, and they may not believe her, we're going to give her a flag of the city of Beloit to take with her.
Wonderful.
So we're going to give her that. And we want to wish her Godspeed. We know she won't be a stranger. She keeps saying she's gone, but I got a feeling within five years, we'll see signs in the yard because she'll be returning and she want to get back on the council. So thank you for all your years of service. Thank you for your dedication to the city, to the citizens of this community, and thank you for your service on the council.
Thank you. Thank you. I have some comments I'll make during councilor's comments that I just wanted to make sure. I thank President Levy for those comments. I appreciate that. We've been through a lot together. We've served together a long time. And one thing I really appreciate is the respect that we all have for each other. Even when we disagree, even when things get very passionate, we always walk out of here with respect for each other. We walk out as friends. And that makes for a beautiful example for our city, that people can disagree and have civil discourse and very strong disagreements and still be friends. I lead Beloit. I love Beloit and always will. And I will be proud to be an ambassador of Beloit wherever I am. And I'm so thankful and proud of the Beloiters and all that they've done. And I can't express enough what a privilege it was to serve as a representative of the residents of this city, that they trusted me with that responsibility. And I'd like to say also that I'm so very thankful for the leadership of our city manager. I am leaving feeling really good about that our hands, really, the city's in good hands with city manager Curtis Luther. So I leave feeling peaceful and positive and optimistic that the direction of the city will move forward. And I just would like to also thank our incredible city staff. We have incredible staff. And I hope they know that even if I'm pushing on issues or disagree with issues, I have such deep, deep respect for our staff. We have incredibly competent, high-qualified, caring staff. And so I just want to make sure that I say those thank yous. Thank you very much.
And I know there are several councilors that have a lot to say, but I would ask if we could save those for other councilor comments. That gives you a little bit more time to really say what you want to say. But once again, we want to thank Sheila for her time served here. Clinton and I have also told her that we want to be out of here before midnight tonight. We told her, we realize this is her last meeting, but we want to make sure that she doesn't make it long so she can stay here all night with us because she loves us so much. So even though she's leaving, we're kind of sad to see her go, but we still want to have fun like we would normally do and not make it a bittersweet moment. So we want to make sure that if she's positive, leaving on a positive note, we want to make sure that we leave it that way. Also, and Clinton and I also told her, there'd be no tears. So she's at her reception. We told her, get it all out of your system now because we're not going to have any tears on Monday night. So thanks, Sheila. And with that, we'll move to proclamations. Vice President Duncan.
Item 3A is a proclamation recognizing Welder Supply Company.
Can I have Ms. Mueller-McClain and Mr. McClain come forward, please? I mean, Mr. Mueller. So I'll say it in that order. Mr. Mueller and Ms. Mueller-McClain, thank you for being here today. If you can come on the side of me, that'd be great. Okay. This is an official proclamation from the city of Beloit. And whereas Welder Supply Company, WSC, was founded in 1938 in Beloit, Wisconsin, to offer welding products and services to local welders. And whereas Welder Supply Company was purchased by Charles Mueller in 1973 and remains a family-owned, in Beloit-based distributor and wholesaler of gases, welding equipment, and supplies. And whereas Welder Supply has expanded to serve southern Wisconsin and northern Illinois through its stores and warehouse facilities in Beloit, Big Bend, and Burlington, Wisconsin, Anne Rockford, and Crystal Lake, Illinois. And whereas the company serves a wide variety of commercial, industrial, and medical customers needing gases and supplies. In addition, the company has an online business that sells welding equipment and supplies throughout the United States and Canada. And whereas Welder Supply has a long history of giving to the local United Way, receiving recognition from the state line United Way in 2002, the Silver Award in 2010, the Bronze Award in 2012, and the Emerging Campaign Award in 2017. And whereas in 2017, Welder Supply Company, in conjunction with American Welding Society Foundation, established an ongoing scholarship fund for two $750 scholarships to be awarded annually to Blackhawk Technical Students enrolled in the welding program. And whereas WSC received the Wisconsin Technical College System's Future Makers Partner Award. And whereas WSC has been the presenting sponsor for Boys and Girls Club, for the Boys and Girls Club golf outing for many years, 2017, 16, and 15, and a corporate sponsor since 2005. WSC was also awarded the Champions of Youth Award from the Boys and Girls Club. And whereas WSC has supported local charities, including the Beloit Health System Foundation, Beloit Regional Hospice, Rock County Cancer Coalition, the School District of Beloit, Blackhawk Technical Institute, the local police and fire departments, Crime Stoppers, Boys and Girls Clubs, the Boy Scouts of America, the Merrill Community Center, Beloit Civic Theater, Beloit High School Jazz Band, Smiles, Women's Fund, J.C.'s, Lions Club, Beloit Snappers, and various other booster clubs, agencies, and churches. And whereas the Mueller family, consisting of Ed Mueller, Pete Mueller, Therese Mueller-McClain, Joan Mueller, and Charles Mueller, have been an integral part of the Beloit community, improving the quality of life with their time, talent, and philanthropic contributions. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Beloit City Council does hereby honor and congratulate Welder Supply Company for their dedication and service to the greater Beloit community, presented on this 21st day of August 2017 by the Beloit City Council. Thank you so much for what you do for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Regina. On behalf of the Mueller family and all the employees of Welder Supply, just thank you so much for this honor. We appreciate it. And we've been here for over 40 years now and push for another 40. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3B, please.
Item 3B is a proclamation celebrating the city of Beloit's racial and ethnic diversity and the importance of the role of the Equal Opportunities Commission.
Okay, can I have Steve Howland to come forward, please? Hi, Steve. Come right over here. This is an official proclamation, celebrating the city of Beloit's racial and ethnic diversity and the importance of the role of the Equal Opportunities Commission. Whereas the city of Beloit has a rich history with a diverse population. And whereas a core city value is the inclusion of diverse people and ideas, respecting the unique contributions of our fellow employees, residents, groups, and organizations throughout the community by seeking out their opinions, talents, and needs. And whereas the city of Beloit Equal Opportunities Commission was created by ordinance 182 to improve the quality of life by the elimination of racism in the Beloit community. The purpose of the commission is to take action, study, analyze, and recommend solutions with respect to the major social, economic, and cultural problems that affect people residing or working within the city, including discrimination in housing, education, employment in public accommodations, and facilities on the basis of sex, race, color, sexual orientation, national origin, or marital status of the person maintaining a household, lawful source of income, age, or ancestry, and the inciting of class, race, or religious hatred and prejudice. And whereas the city of Beloit denounces all acts of neo-Nazi, white supremacists, anti-Semitic, and other groups espousing hate, racism, and discrimination, and the violence that recently occurred in Charlottesville, Virginia. And whereas the city of Beloit will continue to have open dialogue on ways to combat racism and will continue our quest to stand against racism. And whereas the Beloit City Council declared April 24, 2015, April 28, 2016, and April 27, 2017, Stand Against Racism Day in the city of Beloit, encouraging our community to raise awareness that racism still exists while offering to be part of the solution to end racism and other forms of discrimination. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Beloit celebrates the city of Beloit's racial and ethnic diversity and the importance of the role of the Equal Opportunities Commission to combat hate, racism, and discrimination, and to prevent such acts of violence, presented on this 21st day of August 2017 by the Beloit City Council. Thank you.
On behalf of the commission, I thank the city council, the city manager, the city staff for responding so quickly to this situation that we experienced nationally. And I hope that next year, we may have a similar proclamation, however, that it may differ in that we celebrate the progress we have made in eliminating racism in the past year. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. That would close that portion of the agenda. Item four is public hearings. Item 4A, please.
Item 4A is a resolution authorizing planned unit development master land use plan amendment for the properties located at 2850 and 2900 Milwaukee Road to include two portions of 2956 Milwaukee Road.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen, please.
In 2013, you approved a planned unit development for 2850, 2900 Milwaukee Road. And at that time, the zoning was changed from C3 to PUD. Since that time, the photos do show the new development that has occurred with Noodles and that whole strip mall with AT&amp;T. At this point, McBane Enterprises was looking to amend the existing PUD to allow for approved parking, driveway connectivity, and cleanup parcel boundaries for future, potential future sale of lots. So the change is essentially from your existing PUD, which is in yellow on this location map, is including the two greenish hatched areas within the planned unit development. Those areas are mostly parking and driving areas. In order to add those to the site, you need an amendment to the planned unit development, master land use plan, and then a rezoning of those portions, which are on your agenda tonight. The condition, the planning commission did review this at their last meeting and did recommend approval subject to the conditions which are listed in the resolution, which are before you tonight, which is that this approval authorizes an amendment to the PUD master land use plan for the properties located at 2850, 2900 Milwaukee Road to include two portions of 2956 Milwaukee Road. All of the conditions imposed by the PUD resolution dated October 21, 2013 remain in full effect. The parcels shall be combined via certified survey map by December 31, 2017, and then just your standard condition of major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being approved administratively.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, this is a public hearing. I would like to open a public hearing on item 4A. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? If so, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. First call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Second call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing at this time in entertaining motion from council for approval. There's motion by foreback. Is there a second? Second by Duncan. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes six, zero. Item 4B, please.
4B is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning map, zoning district map, to change the zoning district classifications from C3 community commercial district to planned unit development for two portions of the property located at 2956 Milwaukee Road.
Mrs. Christensen.
So this is actually the zoning piece. So those two little green pieces are being proposed to be rezoned from C3 to PUD. This is the second step as part of the PUD process. This is on your agenda for first reading and then lay it over into the rolls, and then we'll come back to you for action at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Once again, this is on the agenda for public hearing. I would like to open the public hearing on item 4B. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Second call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing on item 4B in entertaining motion from council. Is there such a motion? To lay it over. Motion by Duncan to lay it over. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by foreback. All those in favor of laying this over, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it's laid over. Item five, public comments. We're on a portion of the agenda now where citizens may come forward to speak on items that may not be on the agenda. We do ask you to refrain from any personal attacks on staff and council. You are limited to three minutes. I will not cut you off, but I will get you a friendly reminder that you're approaching your three minutes. However, I must warn you, if you come down with personal attacks on staff or council, I will end your discussion immediately. Is there anyone wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Seeing none, I would close that portion of the agenda, move to item six, which is consent agenda. All items on this list will be conducted under one motion unless the council wants one removed. Is there any counselor, like anything, removes the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will, the consent agenda will be sick, will consist of items 6A through 6C. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Who was the first and second on that?
Are there a motion to approve? Motion by DeFor... See, you threw me off, Sheila, see? Motion by DeForz, is there a second? Second by Blakely. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion passes. Item seven, licenses. 7A, please.
7A is a resolution considering the approval of the 2017, 2019 applicants for an alcohol beverage operator's bartender's license through August 11, 2017.
Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Anderson, is there a second? Second by foreback. Any councilor questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. 7B, please.
7B is a resolution approving a new Class B beer and Class B liquor license for G5 Brewing Company, LLC, doing business as G5 Brewing Company, to be located at 1895 Gateway Boulevard, Lee Gunderson Agent. The ABLCC is recommending approval unanimously, 5-0.
Is there a motion? Motion by Duncan. Is there a second? Second by Blakely. Any councilor questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. 7C, please.
7C is a resolution approving a Class B beer and Class B liquor license for Little Mexico of Beloit, LLC, doing business as Little Mexico, located at 2787 Milwaukee Road. Adrian Cortez, Agent, the ABLCC also recommended this for approval unanimously, 5-0.
Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Duncan, is there a second? Second by Anderson, any councilor questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes, 6-0. Item eight is ordinances. 8A, please.
8A is a proposed ordinance to amend certain sections of the index of special locations, Section 1302 of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit, relating to the removal of traffic signals and the establishment of stop signs at the intersection of Bluff Street and West Grand Avenue in the city of Beloit. This is second reading.
Ms. Nord.
Good evening, everyone. The proposed ordinance before you is related to the removal of the traffic signals at the intersection of Bluff Street and West Grand Avenue. Because of a new controller and cabinet and related equipment was needed to repair the traffic signals at a cost of $15,000 to $20,000, the city's engineering department undertook a traffic study to determine the need for the signals. This study was done between March 6 and June 6 of this year. Based on the criteria from the U.S. Department of Transportation, this intersection met none of the warrants for maintaining the signal. Residents of the immediate area have also expressed support for the removal of these signals. And based on the results of the study, and Traffic Review Committee voted five to one in favor of removing the signals and replacing them with a four-way stop intersection. At the request of the council from the last meeting, the Department of Public Works issued a press release to the local media outlets, as well as social media, to provide the public with an additional opportunity to express their opinions on this topic. I provided my phone number, direct line. Nobody called me. So it's my belief that this should be passed.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by DeForz, is there a second? Second by Duncan. Counselor DeForz.
Thank you. Mr. Nord, I just wanted to thank you for taking that extra step to make sure the residents were aware of the change and had the ample time to provide feedback. And those little things really matter. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you. Any other councilor comments or questions? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval, city manager?
Oh, no. I was getting ready for the next item.
All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes, 6-0. 8B, please.
8B is a proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate Sections 1406 Sub 2, Sub 3, and Sub 4, to amend Sections 14.02 Sub 9, 7.06 Sub 2C, Sub D, 7.065, and 25.04 Sub 4D of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit pertaining to rental registration certificates, rental dwelling unit inspections, inspection fees, and enforcement of parking violations. This is first reading.
Thank you, counselor, I mean, seat of Angela Luther.
Thank you. This is a series of changes to the city's ordinances and practices, so I would like to take a few moments to walk through what is being proposed. This is on the agenda for first reading only tonight. It will come back for second reading and a vote on September 5. In 1994, the city of Beloit instituted a rental dwelling permit and systematic inspection program for residential rental properties in response to serious neighborhood concerns about the condition of the housing stock in the city. The program has been supported by this community for over 20 years. We're almost at 25. It addresses public health and safety issues that are unique to the city of Beloit. The city currently has 14,803 dwelling units, and of these, 6,600-plus, 45% are rental units. Of the rental units, over 40% are roughly 2,700 are single-family homes. In 2016, the Wisconsin State Legislature limited municipal authority to regulate residential rental properties. The law imposed limitations on the type of information that a city can request as part of their permit program, but still allows municipalities the ability to register and inspect residential rental properties. Shortly after the law was enacted, local landlords filed a lawsuit against the city alleging that our program violated state law. The circuit court ruling provided clarification regarding the new law and direction for both parties moving forward. Although the city's residential rental registration program did require some changes, the systematic inspection program remained intact. The proposed ordinance for first reading this evening provides the required changes to the inspection program to comply with the circuit court order, as well as offers new options and services that allow the city to address the public health and safety issues that the residents of Beloit have come to expect. There are five pieces to our proposal. The proposed ordinance itself makes several changes to specific sections in 14.06 and 14.02 of the municipal code that regulate the provisions of the residential rental inspection and registration program. So as proposed, this section removes conditions that were formerly placed upon residential rental properties that no longer comply. And that includes, we can no longer require property owners to comply with municipal code violations. We cannot require property owners to pay for delinquent bills or charges that are owed against the property, or to have those properties inspected prior to the issuance of the registration. The proposed ordinance also removes the annual registration fee that was $40 and provides the city, we may not suspend the rental registration certificate unless the application contains false or incorrect information. Lastly, the proposed ordinance will allow delinquent and unpaid fees, as outlined in the ordinance itself, to be placed on the tax roll if necessary, along with a minimal administrative fee comparable to other delinquent fees owed to the city. Now, of the five components of the program, the first of which is the systematic inspection program. This existing interior inspection program is being expanded to include both interior and exterior components. A new interior and exterior checklist will be created that differentiates between major and minor violations. And all rental... This existing interior inspection program is being expanded to include both interior and exterior components. A new interior and exterior checklist will be created that differentiates between major and minor violations. And all rental units inspected under this program will be charged the following fees. The initial inspection is a one hundred and twenty dollar inspection fee on a three-year basis. The first reinspection is a hundred and fifty dollar fee, and that can be waived if no major and no three or fewer minor violations are found. The second or subsequent reinspection is two hundred dollars, but again, that fee can be waived if no major or three or few minor violations are found. We also have clarifying language for boarding and rooming houses that have the inspection fee as stated previously with a per-room charge, as opposed to the full inspection fee for each individual room. The second component is a voluntary inspection program that we are affectionately referring to as the VIP program. The voluntary program is also an interior and exterior inspection service that is available to all residential properties in the City of Beloit. They must be scheduled a year prior to the three-year systematic inspection being due. And at that time, property owners can request this inspection. It would be prepaid, but it provides the opportunity, if successfully completed, to extend that required expansion, required systematic inspection to five years rather than three years. The fees for the VIP program will be prepaid, and there is a reduced rate for participation in the VIP program, with the initial inspection being a hundred dollars. The first reinspection also being a hundred dollars. Second or subsequent reinspections, again, being one hundred dollars. But the reinspections, again, can be waived if there are no major and three or fewer minor violations found. The third component of the inspection program is the complaint-based inspection program. We receive specific complaints from a variety of sources, including concerned family members, tenants, utility companies, other government agencies, our own primarily police and fire departments, Rock County Child Protective Services, et cetera. Upon such a complaint, the city will schedule a required inspection. And inspection fees will be charged at the same rate of a systematic inspection, with a hundred and twenty dollars for the initial, a hundred and fifty for the first reinspection, and two hundred for the second or subsequent. I will note that in a complaint-based inspection, even upon the initial inspection, if there are no major or fewer than, three or fewer, pardon me, minor violations found, that fee will be waived. We think that it will assist with any inappropriate complaints or complaints that are not founded would not become the burden then of that individual. So that component has been included as well. The fourth piece that we have incorporated is expanded parking enforcement. We actually have received a number of requests from residents who are concerned about an abandoned vehicle or other parking violation, and while our police department responds to the best of their ability, sometimes their staff is not able to respond as quickly as one of our code enforcement officers may be able to. Or it may indeed be our code enforcement officer that is calling in the complaint, but they have to wait for a police officer to write the ticket. So we are going to streamline that process, provide some expanded authority for their roles, and we think that that will be a better use of staff time and a more efficient provision of services. And the final component is a formal expansion of the enforcement authority for the right-of-way. Code enforcement staff have provided over the years a great deal of support for our solid waste and recycling team. And while we have not formally adjusted our budgeting for the solid waste fund to support a portion of the time that staff is using on those regulatory activities directly in the right-of-way. For example, with items being left out without calling for service and paying to have those bulky items picked up, as an example. If they're left overly long, that can provide or create a nuisance. So part of the proposal is to offset a portion of the staff time that is dedicated to that service with a rate increase to our solid waste and recycling that is comparable to other services being provided in the region. Our current fee is fourteen dollars per month, and the proposal for two thousand eighteen is sixteen dollars per month. There was an initial publication that suggested a different rate. That has been corrected. I just want to be very clear that the current rate is fourteen dollars per month, and the proposed rate is sixteen dollars per month. That also, that is not an increase that is needed solely for this purpose. We also have other components of solid waste and recycling services and a new facility that's being proposed, of which the debt service payments need to be accommodated within that revenue stream. So that is not solely for this purpose. But in a nutshell, those are the five components of the new programming. I know that is a great deal of information, and I wanted to be sure that we took some time at the council meeting to walk through what those proposed changes are. The second reading again is scheduled for September fifth, and I would be happy to respond to any councilor questions.
Thank you. First of all, can I get a motion to lay it over so we can discuss it first? Motion by foreback, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Blakely. Any councilor, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I would just like to go on the public record with my comments about, about these proposed changes. I, first of all, I'll start with what I'm pleased with, what I think are strengths of these proposed changes. And I think the VIP program is a wonderful one, that it provides a voluntary request for inspection, both external and internal inspections for those property owners that wish it. And I think that's a wonderful proactive way to, you know, invite city staff to take a look at properties that, that the owners, you know, might have concerns about or want to have an inspection done. I'm also very pleased with the fees, the fees that will now be assessed for complaint-based violations. I, it always seemed odd to me that we didn't charge fees for that, and it makes sense that we are going to be charging fees for founded complaint-based inspections. So I'm pleased with that as well. I, I personally, I am against routine systematic internal inspections. And I'd just like to share the reasons why for that are. I, first of all, I considered a violation of privacy. I, I think that tenants are due to have privacy rights, the same as, as owners that live in their homes. And I, I think it's undue, unjustified for the city to decide that they should do inspections of someone's internal premises. It's, to me, it's a, it's a question of privacy, and it's an issue of fairness. We're not treating equally tenants and homeowners that, that live in their homes. I certainly am for internal inspections when there's a justified cause for that, when there's a good reason for that inspection to occur. If another agency requests it, or if there's clearly, clearly some external damage that would warrant some concerns about internal health and safety of the tenants, that makes sense to me. But to routinely require all rental properties to undergo systematic inspection, to me, seems unfair, and it seems like a violation of privacy. And I, I want to make sure that I'm clear. I, I'm a social worker. I care about the health and safety of people. I've devoted my life to improving conditions, living conditions for people. But my concerns become paternalistic when I impose them and restrict people's rights. And I see systematic internal inspections as an infringement of rights and as unfair. I think if you were to ask people that live in their homes, homeowners who are owner-occupied, how they would feel about being required to undergo routine inspections of their homes, the inside of their homes, and pay for those inspections, they would balk. They would say, are you kidding me? No, that's not okay. I'm not okay with it. This is my home. You don't have the right to come into my home. And I think it's unfair for us, out of a paternalistic concern about tenants not being able to call the city and complain themselves, that we have to take care of them and go in and force ourselves into do that inspection. So I just want to share, those are my concerns about why I am against systemic internal inspections. Thank you for allowing me to make those comments.
Thank you.
I'd like to.
Counselor Foreback? You're on. Go ahead and hit your button. You gotta hit it again. There you go.
I partially agree with you, Sheila. But through my position here now, I have heard several not-for-profit leaders talk about people who are renting and who wanted an inspection and needed one, and then they were really what am I trying to, yes, retaliated against, thank you. So that is a worry for me, that, I mean, I, and also, I'm assuming that when people are, when the city inspectors would come in, that there would be lots of time for a notification to the people. Lord knows, I, I mean, I don't even go over to my son's house without calling first. I mean, I would never do that, you know? But I, there is this line here, and this is one thing I'm, I'm learning as I'm on the council. But I lean toward saying, especially because we have heard now about some individuals really suffering for really being distraught over what was not good about their rental unit, to say that I think we have to, to inspect on a regular basis with, of course, lots of notification to those people living there.
Mike, I have a couple of questions as well. When we talk about the VIP program, and I, and I think I brought this up before, when you're asking landlords to pay for a program to be in, I, I struggle with the fact of how many would actually say, sign me up. Let me pay for you to come in and inspect my, my property. Kind of like you said, it's an infringement. Why would I pay for them to come in and find something and then have to pay additional money? The complaint-based reporting, I strongly believe in. First of all, let us, let me be quick to say that when we speak about property that's not kept up, we're not talking about all landlords. I want to make sure that that's clear and noted, that we're not talking about all landlords, because we do have good landlords out there. But when we talk about the quality of life of our residents, then I think that we need to make sure that individuals who are renting are not being taken advantage of, and that they're, they're living in homes like homeowners, that the homes are taken care of. We can ride around the city, and we can see some properties that may not be up to, up to code. So the first thing I got concerned about is how are we going to maintain the program that we had before, that we can get in here, make sure the properties are maintained, make sure individuals who are renting these properties are living in good homes. We know we have landlords who live out of the state. Do they care about their properties, or do they just simply pay the citation? Do we have landlords out there that's just renting and renting and renting, and they know their property is not up to code just to make the money? So that's where I get concerned, that we need to make sure that we do something to make sure that individuals that are renting are living in good homes. And I'm not opposed to saying with the homeowners as well, if I see a homeowner that's not taking care of their property, then yeah, we need to call and say, hey, we got a homeowner who's not taking care of his property. But I just believe that the complaint-based, I don't see, if I'm renting a property, I don't see myself calling in, reporting my landlord. Now, it, maybe I won't be retaliated against, but the fear of me calling and reporting my landlord would frighten me, especially if I'm a parent with small children, because I could be thinking, I'm going to get put out. If I called and complained about this floor that's not being repaired for three months, I could get put out. Then me and my kids are on the street. Does it happen? I don't know. But when I, I want to make sure that citizens that are living in rental property, they're having the same, they're having the same living experience as homeowners, that we can live here, we can be comfortable, and we know that if we have a problem, the landlords are going to take care of the problem. I just want to make sure that we don't lose the progress that we've made. That with all of these changes, I don't want to look up two or three years from now, and our homes are not in good quality, and I'm talking about homeowners and rental property, but then we have tenants who are renting, that's renting in properties that's not kept up to code. But I'm really concerned about the VIP program. Not, I just don't know, and I could be wrong. I don't, if I'm a landlord, I don't know if I would be quick to sign up to say, come in and inspect my property. I mean, I, what are the benefits? I'm not hearing. What are the benefits for me to do that? And maybe that will help. But just to say, we're going to charge you, and you can volunteer for this service, I don't know that.
The benefits are twofold. There is a reduced rate for participation in the voluntary inspection program. So those fees are less than the systematic inspection program. The systematic inspection program is also required to be conducted every three years. However, successful completion of the VIP program will allow you to push that out to a five-year inspection. So there is a reduced cost. There is a lengthier time within which you have to have that inspection conducted. And we have had some requests for this type of program, where there are some who wish to have an inspection scheduled every year. And this provides a reduced rate also for those participants as compared to the systematic inspection program. I would also mention that one of the key components of the differentiation between rental properties and owner-occupied properties is that fundamentally, a rental property is a business venture. It is intended to be profitable. And regulations of that business venture have historically been determined to be appropriate under both state and local law. So this is one issue that we do have a respectful disagreement. But with the majority of the council's support, both in the past and currently, this is why the city has tried to propose an option that allows the continuation of that systematic program. We also have data to support the number of inspections in which major violations, major significant life safety violations are found in those inspections. And I think that's ultimately what we're trying to accomplish, is compliance. And the voluntary program provides an opportunity to demonstrate compliance in a, in a different way that we have not had an opportunity to propose in the past. So we won't know until given an opportunity to try it and see how that, how effective that is. But we hope that it can be at least one component of an overall multifaceted solution.
Okay, just to, just to follow up with, with all the changes in the rulings, I, I believe the city is probably losing, or has a huge shortfall as far as if we have, with inspection fees, not being able to do all that, are we looking at a huge shortfall for the city, and if so, how do we make up that shortfall?
So what is clear is that we can no longer charge for a registration fee. We traditionally charge forty dollars per year, inspected once every three years, but that inspection had no fee associated with it. So ultimately, that annual registration fee was paying for the first inspection. Because we can no longer charge the forty dollars per year for the registration, the proposal for the systematic inspection on a three-year basis is first inspection, a hundred and twenty dollars. So that's how the math works out. It does create a cash flow issue for the city as far as how, you know, that is charged and how it is paid for, et cetera. But this entire package is a way in which for us to move forward in the future with a funding stream that allows us to continue what we believe are essential city services.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Counselor Duncan, and then Counselor DeForest.
The only thing that I had the concern with as far as the VIP was to, if, and this is something we can talk about later, if there were to be a landlord that agreed for someone to come into their property, and let's say, a landlord paid that, and then there was a change in the landlord, that was a concern for me as to how, what would happen with that property, because the concern for me is the conditions that people have to live under. So we want to make sure that we are ensuring, because that's our whole purpose, is to make sure that people are having a good quality of life of where they live at. And then I am happy, though, with that provision with the, and I don't know if the parking was included in that, as far as people parking on, on front lines and things of that nature, but I, I am glad of the expansion of that. So that's all that I have.
Thank you. Counselor DeForest?
Thank you. I actually, I wanted to follow up with what Counselor Forbeck had shared, and would like to see more, I think, I think you all know me well enough over the years that, I, I think that in general, carrots work better than sticks, and I, I would like to see more education, more support of tenants, more education, support of landlords to help them have quality housing. To me, it makes more sense, instead of a city, big bad city coming in and inspecting and fining and flapping violations and waving that stick, that we would be better off if we found more ways to support quality housing for our tenants and for our landlords. And I, I am pleased with the VIP program. I think it's a step in the right direction in terms of shifting the way we do business, and I'd like to see more in terms of proactive, positive response, so that we're providing education to tenants, that we have advocacy resources for tenants who feel that they're having difficulty with their landlord. I, I guess the punitive approach, in my mind, is not as effective, and it creates an adversarial relationship. So I wanted to respond to that, and I also wanted to share that I'm, I am pleased that the, the code enforcement officials will be able to have authority extended with this ordinance change to enforce parking and solid waste. I would like to share again my concerns about that violation resting with the, the, the property owner. If a tenant parks on their front yard, I, I find it hard to understand why that's the landlord's, why that's the landlord's violation. Vehicles have bins on them, I think we should be able to direct that violation to the person who owns that car. I think responsible landlords do their best to educate tenants and to let them know, "Hey, you're parking on the grass, you can't do that." But it doesn't, it doesn't seem fair to hold people accountable who can't get in the car and move it off the grass when it's not their car. So, I, again, I'm, I'm a little concerned about trying to find ways to, to get compliance, and I appreciate city manager's comments that we're about compliance. So what, I, I'd like us to be more creative and think about how we can encourage compliance versus just having citations. And honestly, in, in the 10 years that I've been on here, it's always brought up, "Oh, look at all these violations we're finding when we go into these internal inspections, look at these horrible conditions." And so I'm scratching my head going, "Well, we've been doing these inspections, and why are we still seeing these horrible living conditions?" It's, I'm not convinced this is working, and some of the examples that you shared, I think, point to that. If you, if you have a landlord that's from out of state and you keep throwing citations at them, they just pay the citation, and they don't care, they're not going to fix the housing. I, I think this issue is bigger than just, "Let's go after people with citations." I, I hope, I would encourage that we look at more creative solutions, more proactive solutions, and more positive collaborative resource-focused solution, so I, I just wanted to share that, you know, leave that. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may add, as far as the, the parking on the grass piece, and I, and I shared this with you earlier, so you know kind of where I stand, and I, I truly believe that if this is, if, if I'm a landlord and this is my business, then if I rent to someone, I'm going to explain to them, here are, if you park on the grass, if you do this, this is what the charge is going to be. If you do that, and I'm assessed a, a fine for that, I'm passing that on to you. I'm going to put that in my lease that they understand, that not only does this lease cover that, and this is what you're responsible for, but you need to understand also, any additional charges that I get from the city will be assessed to you in your rental payment. Because I, I, I hear what you're saying, that we should go after the tenant, but if I flip it over and say, if I'm the tenant, and I get up in the middle of the night at 12 o'clock and leave, and I move to California, okay? The city's not going to find me, so they're not going to get that money, you see what I'm saying? They're going to, they're not going to get that money. So to me, okay, well, let's go after the individual who owns the property, because at my home, if I park on the grass, they're not going to come, get the mortgage company that's holding my mortgage, they're going to find me, because I'm the homeowner. So whoever owns that property, that's who that should be assessed to, because you can't always catch tenants, and we know that tenants are in and out all the time. But I think as a landlord, I would put that in my lease and say, "If I get charged anything from the city outside of the norm, we got this understanding before you move in, and you sign right here that I'm assessing that charge to you." That's just me.
And we, we hope the landlords can catch up with them before they move to California to pay that fine.
Well, but the landlord, I think the landlord, but I think the landlord would have more ability to, because if they just get up at 12 o'clock and leave, I'm sure they owe the landlord rent, that the landlord has more avenue to go back.
He'll never see.
Right, but they have more avenue to go after that individual than the city would have to go after for 40 or 50 bucks, I think. I just said California, I didn't, you know? Not saying you owe anybody.
I don't think I do.
Anyone else with any questions or comments? Counselor Blakely?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention on the systematic inspection program, we already have an existing program that covers the interior of properties. So in, in this proposed ordinance change, it would include the exterior of the properties, which seems to me to make a lot of sense, to have both of them included there. The fees are very upfront, they're moderate compared to other communities, so yes, I am arguing in favor of the ordinance changes, although I think Counselor, Counselor DeForest's points about education and proactive programs for our city are, sound very worthwhile and something that we should explore further, and not just go for this ordinance and let it lie. Our, our people need some help and assistance, and education is at the root of so much else.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I believe there is a motion and a second to lay this over, correct? Any, all in favor of laying this over, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, passes five to one. Item nine is appointments.
Under appointments this evening, all appointments will be taken in one motion unless someone wants one of those removed, at which point we'll take that separately. Appointments this evening, our Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee incumbent Dr. Dennis Baskin as Beloit School District's representative for the 1718 school year, the Business Improvement District Downtown Beloit Association Board, I'm going to blow this, Guy Busafaro for a term ending December 31st, 2017, the Equal Opportunities Commission Kevin D. Young, Jr. to a term ending June 32nd, 2019, the Municipal Library Board incumbent Shelley Cronin as Beloit School District's representative for the 201718 school year, and the Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission Lori Andries as the school district's representative for the 201718 school year.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Blakely, second by Forbeck. Any council questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, they are appointed. Item 10, council activities and upcoming events. We'll start with Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Last weekend, I went to the market downtown, it, you know, if you guys haven't been to it yet, it's phenomenal, I'm always impressed every time I go down. Mark Preschel told me to try to get egg rolls, I didn't think that was really appropriate at, yeah, 8:00 a.m., but maybe one of these times I'll do that. Also, this last weekend, I attended a vigil in honor of the victims in Charlottesville to condemn racism and hate. I spoke at that, it was a great event, Steve Howland attended to, and gave a lot of, you know, said a lot of great things about the community, and I hopefully made people feel welcome in this community. Also, yesterday, I went to a peace walk, put on my Switchlanes. We began on the east side of town and walked to Riverside Park, and I saw Sherri Blakely, Mark Preschel, and Kevin Levy gave some wisdom to the people listening to. It was, I didn't make it, but he told me it was great, and he did a mic drop, so I, I trust him on that one. Yeah, but if you don't know, Switchlanes is a nonprofit, and, you know, it's promoting peace in the community and helping people, you know, obviously, switch lanes from a path in life that they have now to a new direction, so I'm embracing it, I hope all of you will give it a chance. I'm excited to see things that promote peace in the community. We've got to change our reputation in the city of Beloit, and I hope that's something that does it. Obviously, if you have been living under a rock, you must have noticed that we had an eclipse today. I went to the Welty Environmental Center and saw it, a lot of kids wanted to make boxes and witness the eclipse, some of them had the eclipse sunglasses on. I, I think it was, it's a great thing, you know, it's coming around again eventually, but I think, you know, it's definitely a once-in-a-lifetime chance, that's why Mark is not with us today, he's an eclipse junkie, if you want to put it that way. Next Tuesday, Merrill Community Center is having to open a house, Community Action recently bought it, and is having to open a house from 8:30 to 6:30, uh, 6:00 p.m. Go out and take a look at it, I've seen some shots of it, I'm pretty impressed, and I hope that they'll stay open and, you know, provide a good asset to that community. Lastly, we got to say goodbye to Sheila. You know, you cannot replace Sheila, you know, she is definitely one in a million, you won't find anyone else like that, that is, you know, I haven't spent much time with you, but it's definitely been a ride, if you want to put it that way, it's been, it's been fun, I'm kind of disappointed you didn't pull off everything off the consent agenda, I've been, I've been telling everybody this. I've been telling people the last two weeks you would do it, but you, you didn't do it, and you stayed quiet most of the meeting, I, I don't know if that's just, you know, you kind of, I, I don't know if that's a going-away present to us, but I was kind of, I was kind of expecting you to do something special, but anyways, you'll be missed, you know, I think all of us will definitely miss you, you know, I, you'll probably get it from the rest of them too, about, you know, how great it's been to be on the council with you, and, you know, I hope you do well in the next chapter in life.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Blakely?
I will second that and echo it, and just say what a privilege it's been to work alongside such a dedicated community member these past few months. I had heard your name, Sheila, over the years, you know, you should talk to Sheila DeForest. Did you hear what Sheila is doing now? Stick with Sheila, she's a good woman, she's doing a lot for the city. But I didn't know the half of it until I started sitting alongside you at city council meetings. Neither did I know about the severities of your childhood and all that you've overcome to be where you are today. I'm only amazed that the plaque she received this evening is the small size it is. There's, oh, there's an arrow, it's continued on the back for everything she's done. So in your absence, Sheila, I wish you all the best, and I know, as Kevin said earlier, you're going to make a difference wherever you live. So there are good things coming to the people of your new community, and I will remember you and what you've done for the city of Beloit, and turn to you for inspiration as I go forward. It's been good to know you.
Thank you, Sherri.
You're welcome.
Counselor Forbeck? Turn your mic.
I had other things to say.
Oh, okay, well, sorry, can you hold that?
Can you hold just a second?
Back to Counselor Blakely.
Back to Counselor, but I'll be quick, because some of it, I was at some of the recent events, the, the rally in Horace White Park on Saturday, and the peace walk down at the Riverside on Sunday, and at the EOC, the Equal Opportunities Commission, meeting last week, that took place so shortly after the horrors of Charlottesville. So I am so happy that we live in a diverse community, where members of our population are honored and respected, and I'm so glad to be a part of our community, and I too speak up for peace and justice.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Forbeck?
Wow, well, how can I follow that very well? I just want to say, Sheila, it has been an honor, and some years ago, I was on the Community Action Board with Sheila, and at, we'd be at a, a board meeting, and Sheila would ask a question, and in my mind, I'm going, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't even realize, that's something I want to know too." So you were very adept at, at looking at things and being able to bring them forward in a concise, great way, so thank you for all those things. Also, this last week has just been so busy, I also Clint got to see the eclipse, but I went down to the Confluence with my husband to see that, and we left right after it rained, and we didn't think we were going to be able to see a thing, and we could. It just, the clouds just kept leaving, and we could see it, and then we traveled up to Janesville for something, and we stopped twice on I-90 going up there on Chopir Road and at the rest stop, and each time, the crescent was even getting smaller of the sun, so I guess we didn't have the total eclipse, but it was spectacular, so how wonderful. Also, quickly, I also was again at the Snappers, who, of course, who doesn't love that? And in fact, my younger son told me that the person who came in second for the Home Run Derby this year, a couple of years ago, was here at the Snappers for two or three years, so I'm not that much of a sports knowledgeable person to know his name, but anyway, that's sort of cool. Also, I have to speak up for the Dirty Dash, I had a beautiful granddaughter, who wasn't very beautiful when she got done with it, who loves it, and then we, I saw today the wonderful email from the woman, Sonia, I think, at our Parks Department, and I just want to say, as a person who used to do events, you know, you, you get an idea, and then you work really hard for it, but you have no idea, really, is it going to be successful? And that's what she was talking about, we had over 600 kids registered for that Dirty Dash this year. How fun, you know? I mean, isn't that what a neighborhood really is, is the whole city doing fun things for our whole community to join? So I've just had a great weekend, Beloit, so thanks.
Vice President Duncan?
Am I on now? Okay. First, I attended the Appointment Review Committee meeting along with President Levy. It looks like we need more people to serve on our city committees, so I would like to encourage citizens to view our city of Beloit website and see if any, if there are any committees or vacancies that you may, that may be of interest to you and apply, because it takes all of us working together to make a difference. In addition to that, along with my colleagues, I was at the YMCA dedication and ribbon-cutting. I felt proud that our city manager and city of Beloit have played such an important role in making this effort happen, and I want to commend Doug Britt and the YMCA board and staff for continuing to provide quality services and programs in Beloit for people of all ages. The new facility looks amazing and certainly complements our downtown. And speaking of the YMCA, I want to thank everyone that participated in making Regina Duncan Day so successful by giving to the Y. The final total isn't in yet, but the last I heard, we were at $3,000. The funds that were given will be used to cover transportation costs for children to be transported after school to the YMCA on their new bus. I also want to thank Beloit Floral, The Villager, Mobo, Bagels &amp; More, Culvers, Bill Locke, Matt Finnegan, the Merrill Center Board of Directors, Nancy Forbeck, the United Church of Beloit, Nancy and Clyde Boutel, the Beloit Country Club, the Asian Museum, Beloit Daily News, Shopping News, The Chronicle, the city of Beloit, the YMCA, the Wisconsin State Public Defender Board, and my wonderful friends, coworkers, family, and the community for joining in and making me feel so special. However, it wasn't just about me. It was a day to raise money for the YMCA, and that we did. Hopefully, that will, that event will inspire others to raise money for programs that benefit children and families in our community. It's like that African proverb, "It takes a village to raise a child." Also, special thanks to Steve Howland, the Equal Opportunities Commission, Welder Supply, and the Mueller family for your great works in our city of Beloit. in our city of Beloit. And I want to say to Sheila, thanks for your service, and I wish you well as you pursue future endeavors.
Thank you.
All I have.
Just a few comments. I would also like to echo Vice President's comments about the Y. Very great open house. I was touring with someone, and I even looked at them and said, this may even get me down here. So don't hold your breath, Sheila. Don't hold your breath. But I just think hats off to everyone who was involved in that, that opening, and then also the work that they're doing down there. So I know it's going to be a great asset to the downtown. And I'm just encouraged to the way Beloit is going. Also, I want to thank Chief Liggett in the Fire Department. Recently, about a month or so ago, there was flooding over in the Burlington, Wisconsin area. And one thing about Beloit, we don't only help out Beloit, but we help out other cities as well. And I believe that he sent some guys over there, or himself and the team. I'm not just going to say guys because I know there's fire women as well. So it's in the team over there to assist. And I want to say, at least for the police and the fire, a lot of times, we see them going and to do fires or arresting people, but we don't necessarily see all the community involvement that they do. So I think that we take for granted sometimes that all they do is go out and fight fires, or all they do is go out and arrest bad guys. But if you sit down and talk to a couple of them, they will tell you as much community involvement that they actually do. So when you drive by the firehouse, you may see the trucks there, but that does not mean that they're not doing something to move Beloit better. So I just want to thank both departments for what they do. But I also want to thank the Police Department. When you look at the news, you see in a lot of communities where there's problems with the Police Department. And whenever I see something like that, I'm thankful and of our Police Department because we don't have those issues. I'm sure we have some type of issues, but we haven't had the ordeals that other cities have experienced. And I truly believe that that's because we have departments that are community focused. They want to know what can we do in the community, and I'm talking about the police and fire, what can we do in the community to be part of the community? And I truly believe that I rode with Sales on National Night Out, and just the way that he was talking to the citizens and other police officers do the same thing. I truly believe that that's why we don't have some of the issues that other cities have. So I want to commend those individuals as well. Our diversity here, as Counselor Blakely said, is huge. It's great. I truly believe that Beloiters, if there's an issue, we talk about it. No matter how uncomfortable it is, we put it on the table. We do a better job of dealing with it, but I think we need to continue those tough conversations because that's truly how we move the city forward. I also want to congratulate Switch Lanes for their first event here. It was very well received. A lot of people, I got a chance to talk to them, and they were enjoying it. So I want to commend them and then look for them to come back and do this again. Then the last thing I want to admit, that we talk about all the time, People's Clash Reunion, and I've been out of school for 25 years. Well, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to go to my elementary school. New Zion Baptist Church is the former site of Waterman Elementary School, where I went to school. So I had an opportunity to go back there. They had a Clash Reunion. They wanted everyone who went to Waterman to come back. And I was joking with my mom when she said, oh, I sent all your grade school pictures there. I was like, you did not. So looking back in 1960, when I was there in 1970s, I didn't even take my kids because I didn't want them to see. But it was very encouraging and exciting to see a lot of people that you went to elementary school with. So you think it's bad trying to remember people from your high school. You try remembering people from elementary school and how much they've changed. But it was a great time. I want to say hats off to New Zion for doing that. And it was just a great experience. I already said goodbye to Sheila, but we'll say it again, that truly you'll be missed in the city. And I told her, so she's not going to be surprised. I said, there's two things. Either you like Sheila, or you don't like Sheila. And you have to respect, I mean, you have to respect that because Sheila has the type of attitude, whether you like me or not, I'm going to say what I want to say, I'm going to do what I want to do, and I'm going to believe what I want to believe. And that's truly an amazing sign of a leader, that you know what, I got a job to do, and I'm going to do the job whether you like it or not. So I think Lori, if you could find out where she's going in California, call the elected officials there, kind of give them a heads up that Sheila's coming. And be ready, because I know she's going to do great things no matter where she goes. And if you know her children, they're kind of following in her kind of footsteps. They're very outspoken. They're very determined, and they have a belief. They work towards that belief. So hats off to you. Good luck. And I got a feeling you'll be back. So with that, that ends council activities and upcoming events.
Are you going to come?
Sure. Oh, I didn't call on you.
I'm speaking up again. I actually have a statement I'd like to read, and please forgive me that I'm reading. I just want to make sure I don't mess this up. This is my last chance to address the public. So I've been visiting each of the city of Beloit's 46 parks. Isn't that amazing? We have 46 parks. Over the last several months, as I prepared for leaving home, as I was walking down College Street and on the flagstone path at Horace White Park, it struck me that many generations of Beloiters have walked this very route. I felt the connection to those who had walked it and thought of those early Beloiters who each contributed money to wreck the college's first building. The city and the college was founded by abolitionists. I don't know if you all know that. It was founded by abolitionists who specifically came here firm in their belief of the abolition of slavery. And they were determined to have equal access to education. And so those early Beloit residents, rich and poor, all contributed whatever they could to pay for that building. I think it's important to note that while wealthy benefactors have had a hand in Beloit's development by providing important financial resources for capital and infrastructure, the people of Beloit have always, always rallied together to make things happen. And it's that spirit of generosity, community, and concern for the welfare and success of all residents that makes Beloit special. Beautiful spaces are important, but without strong, vibrant, healthy neighborhoods and thriving people, only those who are well off, or those who are visiting from out of town, have the luxury of enjoying those beautiful, wonderful spaces and reaping the rewards of those. As city councilors, our responsibility is to represent the people, all the people, and ensure that we keep the safety and welfare of the residents as our highest charge and greatest priority. Corporate investment is appreciated and certainly helps to promote Beloit's economic vitality, but corporate interests should never take precedence or hold higher say over the regular folk of Beloit, to those who actually pay their taxes and live here. Beloit's progress should not be attributed solely to a handful of well-to-do wealthy saviors. Rather, it's been a collaborative, community-wide effort that must continue to recognize and include all of our city stakeholders to realize our long-term success. I'm proud to be one, one of very many residents who have played a small part in making Beloit a special place, along with folks like Jasmine Carbajal, Ms. Lulaby Ray, Norvane Pleasant, Steve Howland, Eric Williams, Carmella Hyde, Mark Smith, Megan Miller. The list could go on and on and on. I am confident that it's the people of Beloit that will continue to resuscitate and revive and move the city forward. I am confident in the leadership and capacity to do so. And I want to assure you that no matter where I roam, I will always consider Beloit a place that I am proud to call home. Thank you.
Okay.
Continue the applause.
Item 11 is city manager's presentation. Counselor Luther. I mean, city manager Luther? Where'd I get? There's, oh, she asked one.
But no, I had asked for a moment. I don't have a formal presentation, but I would be remiss if I did not take an opportunity to publicly acknowledge Sheila DeForest. And councilors and residents and friends have had many opportunities to share how she has changed their life. But on a very personal level, I want to thank her for being part of the original council that brought me and my family here. And for that, I am eternally grateful. So it certainly shaped and altered the course of my career and our life. And we are now Beloiters and looking very forward to many, many years to come here. So thank you very much for helping make that happen. And good luck to you.
Thank you. Item 12, reports from boards and city offices. There are none. Item 13, everybody look. See how long this is going to take.
I will move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second motion by DeForest, second by Forbeck. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.